Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the East Brandywine Board of Supervisors Township Meeting for Thursday, February 17th. Tonight's agenda, this is the agenda, and tonight we will be using a recording device during this meeting. We're going to open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to open it up for public comment for agenda items. So anything that's on the agenda tonight, if somebody has a comment for that, we'll do the non-agenda at the end of the meeting, as always, but open it up for public comment for agenda items tonight. Any of you have? Go ahead.
Good evening. Jim Buxala, I'm on the Historical Commission. With regard to the bridge presentation, I don't know what's in the presentation, so I'm curious whether we might be able to ask questions or comment during that presentation.
Absolutely. Yep.
Good evening. Joe Edwards, East Brandywine Fire Company. I come tonight for the supervisors just to get a quick overview of the EMS service in East Brandywine Township. It was brought to our intention at the fire company that some residents had reached out to the Board of Supervisors, the police chief, and to the township manager as to who, as to who was covering their area and how we came about with the coverage. In 2020, the fire chief, Vince D'Amico, and I reached out to Tower Health. We have with the Representatives of Tower Health with us tonight, and we talked to them about covering the back part of our township, Hatfield Road, Lenora Lane, Nuland Drive, since they sit at the Houston Building in West Brandywine Township, right off the backside of the hospital. We came to an agreement with Tower Health at that time that they would cover the backside of East Brandywine Township. There are 24/7 MICU that's located there. That was a change from the previous year. We were happy with their performance in 2020. In 2021, we signed the agreement of emergency services again with Tower Health. There's been some concern about ambulance club memberships, whether they would be honored, not honored. In 2021, no township resident in that area should have been solicited for an ambulance service other than a Tower Health letter. If, in fact, they were solicited and subscribed to it and made it known to Tower Health at that time, when they responded to the residence, that service would be honored by the Tower Health folks. If Tower Health is not available to cover that area, then the fire chief and I have it set up in the Chester County radio room that AVL dispatching would take place, which means the next closest unit would go to that area, whether that's an ambulance service that staff driving up Reeseville Road to go back to a district or going across. But the next due ambulance via AVL would be dispatched. With that being said, tonight with us is Anthony Martin. He is the Director of Tower Health, ALS and BLS. I have Stuart Dixon, who is the Chester County Emergency Service Rep for Tower Health. And since you haven't met Anthony for all last year and this year, because we just didn't think it was necessary, he's going to come up, say a few words. If you three have a question for him, Luke, if you have a question for him, chief, feel free to ask him at this time, but hopefully everybody will be satisfied with where we stand with EMS at this point then.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Edwards, and good to meet you all tonight. Like he said, my name is Anthony Martin. I'm the Director of EMS for Tower Health, Tower Direct. And maybe just some structure that might make a little more sense. Tower Direct is an independent entity. It is under the Tower Health umbrella, but is not under any of the hospitals. So we have, are continuing the EMS service that we provide, including the ALS intercept that we've had for years. And over the last two years, we had upgraded to some ambulances and some MICUs that we stationed out of the Houston Center Building. And we agreed to cover the, you know, the portion of East Brandywine Township that we're closest to, and that, from my knowledge, has been going well. I know that anytime that there's a transition and people are interested in making sure that they have the ambulance membership in place, so they don't end up with a large bill themselves. And what we had discussed with Chief Edwards is making sure that, and I committed to him as well, that if anything were to come up, that they thought they had a membership with another agency, we would honor that. And as that, as that changes and grows, and if we, if the larger area that we are the transporting ambulance for, we'll continue, we'll, you know, we'll look at offering those ambulance memberships as well, but we didn't want to start getting any chance of having people get multiple solicitations, so we didn't do that yet, but we want to make sure that we honor that. We've got a great partnership and relationship with East Brandywine Fire and are happy to serve your residents, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have for me.
Yeah, I personally don't have any questions. Joe Edwards and I spoke many times about this over the last couple of weeks, and he actually jumped on board and returned many phone calls, you know, to help us out on this, to answer any questions for the residents. So he did a fantastic job explaining it, and I'm totally fine with the situation.
I have a question. If you're, you're, you're part of the Tower Health, but you're an independent organization.
That's correct.
I know they have several independent organizations, not just the hospitals its own. How long is the contract for that you've worked out? Is there, is there an actual contract, or is it just verbal?
It's, it's, go ahead.
Carl, if you're asking about a contract between Tower Health and East Brandywine Township?
No, Tower Health Direct.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were, because ours is a resolution contract between them and the township. That's why I thought you were.
Well, that's a contract.
Yeah.
And how long is it for? A year?
That's annual.
Okay. Thank you. That's what I just.
And if any, if anything, and this would go for any EMS agency anywhere, the state requires at least 90-day notice if there's going to be any change in any kind of level of service. I don't expect that to happen.
Sure it wasn't a 90-day.
Yeah.
Agreement or, or something that would put us into a difficult situation sooner than later. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Kyle, I'm Terry O'Neill. I'm not on the agenda, but you said I could have three minutes.
Correct. This would, this would go at the, this is the procedure. So it goes to, starts with the agenda, anything that's on the list, and then at the end is when we do the non-agenda. And so that, that's exactly when that, that item would come in, just.
Agenda, the meeting here.
Well, I think it, yeah, it's the, yeah, pretty much. It's, it's, pretty much, yeah. But I mean, we have.
Point of order, can we hear the solicitor's determination, or is that your perception, Kyle?
That's the way that the Board has approved it. So anyway, Mr. O'Neill, if you don't mind, we'll do the, the non-agenda at the end of it, and, and we'll do the agenda like we planned for the agenda tonight.
I don't think, I don't see how anything's going to get changed here anyhow.
Well, the idea, and that's what I was telling you on the phone, the idea is to get your points across tonight so that we can sit down and put pen to paper and try and figure it out, and it's not, certainly nothing's going to get resolved tonight, for sure, I'd imagine, based off of our telephone conversation, but at least we can get the Board brought up to speed on some ideas.
It's another month before.
It's definitely going to take some time, yes.
If I submit them to you in writing tomorrow.
I'm happy to, I mean, you can do it through the Board of Supervisors, and everybody would get a copy of it.
I don't.
And then we could put you on the agenda for the next one with.
If by then it would be, it doesn't really matter at that point. You know the critical nature of it, because you've been through.
Again, if you, that's just a protocol. If you want to submit it to the Board, though, the Board can certainly talk it over with the solicitor as well.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
What does he want? The barn law now? Stormwater and stuff, yeah.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes of the previous meetings. So we have the meeting minutes from December 16th, 2021. I make a motion that we accept the minutes as written.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting minutes from January 20th, 2022. Board of Supervisors, I make a motion that we approve as accepted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Board of Supervisor, meeting minutes, February 3rd, 2022, AM session. I make a motion, we approve as submitted.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Treasurer's reporting authorization to pay bills, so I'll turn it over to Luke.
I have your view tomorrow, so I'm pretty good. Good morning, Mr. Chair, or good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. In line with the policy we, or the precedent we set at the last meeting, I'm going to read a summarized version of account balances, and, and then it would be appropriate for the, someone on the Board to make a motion to pay the bills as prepared by the Township Treasurer. The balance in the general fund checking account was $1,045,166.40. In the contra cash account marked due from the applicant for stormwater, there is a negative balance of $2,444.43. In the fire services fund balance, there is $35,233.86. In the solid waste fund, there is a balance of $2,122.71. In the traffic impact fee fund, there is a balance of $1,785,711.13. In the open space referendum fund, there is a balance of $3,184,299.69. In the open space developer fee and lieu, or impact fee fund, there is a balance of In the consolidated capital projects funds, there is a balance of $1,409,208.68. In the Township State Fund, the liquid fuels fee fund, there is a balance of $368,609.73. And in the Township's Uniformed Pension Plan, there is a balance of $6,746,704.60. And in the uni, the non-uniformed pension plan, there is a balance of $2 million, $2 This, this submitted by the Township Treasurer.
Okay. I've already talked to Supervisor Winters, and I've already, I've already gone through it. Do you need a minute?
To go through all the bills?
Yeah, and we've already.
No, I reviewed them all this afternoon. I'm, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion to accept the report, so.
After you.
I move we accept the report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Luke again for Township Manager's report.
Thank you. I want to begin tonight with a thank you to the Board of Supervisors and to the staff for your generous support following the unexpected passing of my grandmother. And your generosity has made it possible for me to travel home, to be with my family on short notice, and I appreciate the, the flowers that were sent. So my thanks there. I'm endeavoring to get caught up on, on what I lost in that period away. Second this evening, I have an update on the solid waste program. The Township staff has recently completed the required reporting on the performance of our recycle program. This is a report due to the Chester County Solid Waste Authority. There is an interesting trend included in your packet as a, as a chart. We had a massive spike in the performance of recycling last year, which I attribute mostly to Amazon packages and COVID. But the performance for the year that ended is the material diverted from the waste, diverted from the landfill was 1,033 tons from the curbside recycle program, 164 tons from our recycle drop-off facility, and 31 tons from our curbside yard waste. That is a program that is distinct from the, the Public Works programs of chipping and leaf vacuum collection. A little later on the agenda tonight is a presentation from, from Chester County regarding Reed's Road Bridge, but I did want to also mention that PennDOT has advised us of their plans to replace the Little Washington Lindell Road Bridge. This bridge will be closed starting on February 28th and remain closed through September. The, the, the one-span bridge was built in 1918. It's 25 feet long and 18 feet wide, and the bridge carries about 1,000 vehicles a day. So that will be a pretty significant disruption on the north side of the community for that replacement, but it is long overdue. Staff had occasion to meet with Peggy Whitaker and representatives of the Chester County Community Foundation on the subject of the Whitaker Memorial Trailhead Park. As you'll recall, Ms. Whitaker and her late husband, Dr. Whitaker, were the former Omers of the land and were the primary advocates for the development of this park, and they also raised the private funds necessary for the purchase of the improvements in the park. The Chester County Community Foundation manages those charitable gifts. The purpose of our meeting was to discuss the restoration and maintenance of this park. The park flooded on three occasions, beginning, well, at least since 2020, most recently during Tropical Depression IDA. The, the park remains closed and in a seriously damaged state. Private funds remain in the Chester County Community Foundation for the development of the park. Staff expressed concerns in restoring park to its original specifications due to the frequency of flooding observed at the site. Ms. Whitaker expressed concern that the current damage condition is incompatible with the intent of many donors who made the park possible. As a compromise, staff is going to be proposing a, a reconfiguration of the amenities in the park to make them more resistant to floods in the future. The proposal will include a substitution of an alternative trail service that's more resistant to high water, the, the closure, the closure of some of the trails at the site, and the relocation of some of the park amenities within the site. The Township's proposal will also include a plan for the routine maintenance of the park going forward. I think it also, another interesting outcome of this meeting is that the, the donor's intent was clarified relative to the point of crossing connecting to the Struble Trail located on, in, in Euclid Township. The, the donors do not have strong feelings that the, the safe pedestrian crossing connecting the park to the Struble Trail must be on the site of that facility. So that opens up a range of alternative locations for a pedestrian bridge, and still within the spirit of the contributions of the donors who made the park possible, which I think is an interesting, certainly was news to me. There are two bridges in East Brandywine Township that remain closed following damage from Tropical Depression IDA in September of 2021. They are the Old Stone Arch over Old Horseshoe Pike and the East Bridge over Beaver Creek in the Bonsville Mill Park. In both instances, the Township Engineers' recommendations for the permanent restoration of these two damaged facilities involves a scope of work which is beyond simple restoration to pre-flood conditions. The Township has applied for and received aid from the Federal Emergency Management Public Assistance Program. These, these, this will pay 100% of cost, 75 from the federal agency, and 25% from the, the state agency. Staff has been working to document and obtain reimbursement for all the emergency work already performed and to obtain some form of pre-authorization to bid out a scope of work beyond simple restoration to pre-flood conditions. Most recently, Roadmaster Van Leeu and I met with FEMA representatives on February 14th for a recovery scoping meeting, and the next step is a virtual site meeting where we can get the, the, an opinion from FEMA experts on exactly what we can bid out. I will not read it into the record, but I have included in my, in my report a recommendation for a, a, a means by which the Planning Commission can provide comment before the zoning hearing board. The gist of my recommendation is that the, the MPC envisions that, that the Planning Commission may provide testimony before a zoning hearing, a zoning hearing before the zoning hearing board at the request of the governing body. And so what must be resolved is the sequence of events so that all applications can go to a planning commission first, the Board of Supervisors second, and then the zoning hearing board, in such a way that does not delay the Township's processing of an application. So my, my proposal is included in your packet. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Building Inspector's report.
All right. For January 2022, 18 building permits were issued, two zoning permits. The fees collected for building and zoning permits were $35,093. Respectfully submitted, Norrington King, the Permits Administrator.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Matt for the Roadmaster's report.
Thank you. We are required by MUTCD to have a plan for replacement of street signs in the township. There are several ways to plan for that replacement. We could purchase a refractometer, which measures the effectiveness of signs to reflect headlights during night driving. Another method is to drive the roads at night and assess each sign for its reflectiveness. And a third way, which we chose a while back, is to replace the signs based on their expected lifetime. We elected to replace signs every 10 years, and we maintain a database that indicates the last time a sign was replaced and its expected time for the, the next time it should be replaced. There are well over 1,000 township-owned signs in East Brandywine, and we intend to replace about 150 to 200 this year. Last week, I met with Kyle Turner of Cedarville Engineering Group for a kickoff meeting to discuss the 2022 road program. Mr. Turner is going to provide a proposal to prepare bidding documents and specifications. Now, let's go talk about Little Washington Bridge, but somebody beat me to it, so we're good. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Chief for the Police Department report.
Good evening. East Brandywine Township had a total of 2,544 events. We handled 179 investigations, made three criminal arrests, we had zero summary arrests, there were two warrant arrests, the department had no juvenile petitions, we had investigated eight traffic accidents, issued 100 traffic citations, issued 69 traffic warnings, and officers logged 10,010 miles of patrol. There was only one correspondence this month from resident Greg Moore, and it was a thank you to Officer Maureen Ray. And attached in your paperwork is the monthly investigations and the officer activity report.
Thank you, and I'll turn it over to Chief for the East Brandywine Fire Company report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Fire Company responded to a total of 59 incidents for the month. Thirty-seven of those were fire-related, 22 were medical-related. We responded to a total of 10 fire calls and 15 medical calls in East Brandywine Township, 16 fire calls and seven medical calls in West Brandywine Township, with one fire response in Upper Euclid. We went to the borough of Downingtown, East Fowl Field, East Nam Mill, and West Bradford Townships once. We went to Valley Township twice, Wallace Township four times. We had an average number of 10 people per call. We used 152.7 gallons of East Brandywine Township fuel, 30 gallons of West Brandywine Township fuel, for a total of 182.7. We had no fire damage, injuries, or fatalities for the month. We had three trainings during the course of the month, which an average number of 15 people per training night. Some good news I just wanted to report to the Board of Supervisors. As many of you guys know, one of our very own, Greg Colmeyer, had a very significant medical emergency at his house roughly a week and a half ago now. Glad to report that he's, was discharged from the hospital. He's been transferred to Brenmore Rehab, where he's hoped to make a full recovery. So hopefully he'll be home maybe this weekend or early next week. So I just wanted to relay that information to you guys.
Chief, I think it would go unnoted if it weren't for both the fire and the police being at the scene so quick that we would be talking a totally different scenario with that. So thank you guys both, and your platoons and your, your men and women for their service. Okay, January Planning Commission meeting minutes. I just make a motion, I guess, for those to be accepted as written, and we'll have a motion for the, the Manager's Report through the Fire Company Report that you just went through.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to, we've got an extension on the conditional use decision for Yale Plainbrook Guthrieville LLC, so that's going to be off the table tonight. We're going to talk about the ESCRO release number three, Apple Cross Phase Five South Track. Luke?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the second time, included in your packet is a letter dated January 27th from Township Engineer Nate Klein recommending the release of $388,640, $24.53 from the ESCRO for the improvements in Apple Cross Phase Four South Track.
Okay, and I have been on the phone, I see some, some residents from Apple Cross here today. I have been on the phone earlier today with, with our solicitor, and I believe as late as today, and even possibly yesterday, our, our engineering firm, Panoni, Nate Klein, has dealt, has, has had conversations with Andrew DeFonzo, I believe is the name, for, for Apple Cross. This particular release is more concerning the pavement projects, and to my knowledge, don't quote me to the penny, but I believe we have $178,000 left for the final ESCRO release payment on that. Kristin, am I kind of right there?
You are. There's $178,134 left in ESCRO for Phase Four. Nate did not agree to release all that Pulte requested. It's considerably less than what Pulte requested as a release, so he is being very conservative in his release, and confirmed with me on more than one occasion that what they are asking for to be released was down to the satisfaction of Panoni's construction inspections, inspectors.
Okay. And so anyway, at this time, I think some of the main concern has been put to, put to rest on this, and we, we have 45 days from, from the date of, of ask to, to, to see this through. So, so I have no problem with this right now. I know I've talked with Kristin, I've talked with Nate, and I've talked with, with Joe DeFrank as well today, so if you guys have any questions.
Okay.
I'm okay with it. I, I did review it myself, and I saw what it was for, and I'm okay with it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept, go and release ESCRO number three for Apple Cross Phase Five, I'm sorry, Four South Track.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go on to new business for the bridge presentation by McCormick and Taylor.
I guess I added an "and" in there, McCormick Taylor.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for making time for us this evening. My name is Jan Bowers. I'm Director of Facilities for Chester County. We're here to talk to you tonight about the North Reed's Road Bridge project that we're undertaking and to explain why we're taking it and the direction that we're going, and to solicit any further input and questions from you that you may have. We've got a number of representatives from our team here tonight, from the Chester County Planning Commission, of course, from McCormick Taylor, the bridge engineer, and also from Carol Engineering, who's doing the design for this project. So the, just a quick intro, as you know, of course, Chester County owns a number of, of bridges across the county. We have 94 bridges on local roads, all stream-crossing bridges, and we maintain all of those bridges and, and as necessary, do reconstruction, rehabilitation, replacement as, as needed, which brings us to the Reed's Road Bridge. When we take on a, a bridge project, we tend to scope it with trying to ensure that our design and development process includes looking at all the different considerations that might relate to the bridge, not just the structure, but the structure itself has to meet all of the, the needs and objectives of the community and the uses of that bridge that are anticipated through its life. So we look at trying to make sure we, we understand what those objectives would be. Our discussion today, we want to help you understand why the county's undertaking the project here for North Reed's Road, and we also would like any input you have on municipal priorities, if, if in fact they are different from or in addition to what we are already working on. We had the opportunity to meet with staff a couple of weeks ago. It was a very productive meeting and was very helpful in gaining further insights into considerations for the project, and brought us here this evening to give you a summary of, of that information. The general process that we undertake when we do a bridge project can be kind of boiled down into five generic steps, so to speak, or sections of the process. We first determine the, the purpose. We first determine the purpose and need or the objectives of the bridge and the bridge project. It then moves into doing site considerations and surveying the site, doing the environmental studies, determining what the site constraints and physical constraints might be that we have to deal with in the design. That then moves on into preliminary engineering. After the preliminary engineering comes the final design, and then finally comes construction. For a bridge similar to the North Reeds Road Bridge, that process typically will take three to four years. We're about six months into this project, so we have a ways to go. We're at the point where we wanted to gain input from you folks before we go further to make sure that we have our design aligned on the right path, so to speak, as we move forward. Funding for this bridge is completely, we refer to it as local county funding. It's actually the Act Five Fee, which is the fee that gets paid when you register your car. That funding gets collected by the state and then returned back to the county, and we invest that in our bridges program. So it is that funding that's actually being used for this particular project. As we present information to you this evening, I would ask you to keep a few key questions in mind so that might spur some thoughts and give us some feedback that we would find useful or perhaps raise other questions in your mind. First is, what additional information might you have with regard to the future needs and uses of this bridge that we maybe have overlooked or we're not aware of? What other considerations should we consider or evaluate, other than what we present to you? How else can we best meet the anticipated needs of the community? Do you have any additional concerns, other than what we talked to, with regard to the load-carrying capacity, the aesthetics of the bridge, the environmental considerations, pedestrian and bike use, or any other aspects? And then, as we are wrapping into this, with regard to what the design objectives are, do they appear to be consistent with what you and the community would like? Or are there other considerations for priority design objectives that we should take into consideration? With that, I'll turn it over to Sandy McCormick, or Bridge Engineer, from, she just renamed you. Sandy Martin, our Bridge Engineer from McCormick Taylor, to tell you a little bit more about the bridge project.
So I'm going to leave the new project a little bit to Justin Coyle, who's here from Carol Engineering, because as Jan said, they're the design engineer. But McCormick Taylor is the county's bridge engineer. And personally, I've been working with county's bridge program since the late 1980s. So this particular bridge was built in 1939. It is older than May. And typically, when we design a bridge today, we look for like a 50-year design life. So you can do the math. This one's about 82 years old. It has surpassed its estimated design life. This is a two-span bridge, multi-beam, two spans, clear spans of about 40 foot each. And right now, there's a couple of things that have made this bridge of concern for us. One of them is the deck and the superstructure are two, I'm sorry, the deck and the substructure. So the deck is the riding surface, that's the structural piece, not the asphalt over top of it. And then the substructure are the pier and the two abutments that support the beams. They're both in fair condition, so that's kind of okay from a bridge person's perspective. But the superstructure, which is actually the steel beams that carry the load, and they're probably the most significant carrying component of the bridge, is in poor condition. And in addition, the channel, if you were around the bridge with the September storm, you would probably know that the channel is, takes a lot of water. East Branches Brandywine is in poor condition, and this bridge is considered to be scour critical. So what that means to a bridge engineer is, when we have a flooding event or a rain event where there's two inches or more in a 24-hour period, we have to monitor this bridge and make sure that, because of the foundation type and because of the amount of water going through here, we have to make sure that the stream is not entering into pressure flow, filling up the whole opening of the bridge, and then potentially scouring out the stream bed material and causing what could be catastrophic conditions underneath the substructure. So that's a big deal for us. The substructure has been around for a while, and we don't have a lot of intelligence on how that was constructed or what lies beneath. In addition for this bridge, the roadway width is 19 foot 3 inches. That's considered two-lane, but it's a narrow bridge per standards. And then the most significant thing, I think, because this is one of two bridges that allow you to access the Upper Euclid neighborhoods near Marsh Creek, is that we have a 12-ton weight restriction. That's, from a bridge engineer's perspective, that's very restrictive. And I'll show you that on the next slide a little bit. The last thing I wanted to mention is the safety features. A number of years ago, we worked with the township on both sides to put approach guide rail on this bridge. So the approach guide rail is pretty close to standard and pretty acceptable from a safety standpoint. But the actual bridge railing on the bridge is the metal rail, and it does not meet standard and cannot meet modern impact resistance. So this is the best chart, I think, we've found to kind of give an understanding of that 12-ton weight restriction. And then I will also say, a couple, a few years ago, this bridge was at 16 tons. So it has been deteriorating over time, and I'll show you that in a couple of pictures too. But when you have a 12-ton restriction, you see that bright red line in the diagram. You really can only service passenger vehicles, SUVs, trucks, small trucks, small ambulances, and then very light delivery vehicles. So your school buses, your fire trucks, your trash trucks, your large municipal dump or plow trucks, concrete trucks, all of those are prohibited from using the bridge due to the weight restriction. So give you a glimpse underneath. Most folks don't get a chance to get underneath the bridge, but there is some significant deterioration of the beams. Probably the most telling picture is the one in the center to the bottom there, where that is the bottom flange, that's the bottom steel of the beam, and you can see that it has deteriorated to a point where we've lost some section. So each time we go out as a bridge inspection, which we do annually, we measure that, and we measure all of the areas of the bridge, and we try to analyze it to determine what the load-carrying capacity of the bridge is. So as that rusts and it deteriorates and dilaminates and we lose steel section, we're getting less and less capacity. So we're in that phase of the bridge life right now, and that's why we've gone from 16-ton down to 12-ton recently. And lastly, so what all of that kind of adds up to for the county is, why do we have this project? Well, we'd like to eliminate the weight restriction. So we've asked Carol Engineering to look at designing a replacement bridge at this location that would be legal loads, no posting. We'd also like to update the safety features to current standards. Again, the approach rail is in pretty good shape, but the bridge rail doesn't meet anything near a current standard. And then the scour critical I mentioned, we'd like to do substructure units on this bridge, on the new bridge, that would be able to withstand any kind of storm relative to the scour and undermine. And then finally, we'd like to improve the access for all users. So we've looked at that both from a vehicular standpoint and pedestrian and other uses. So with that, I'm going to turn everything over to Eric Quinn of the County Planning.
Hi, good evening. My name's Eric Quinn. I'm a transportation planner with the Chester County Planning Commission. As far as the historic status, as Sandy said, the bridge was built in 1939. It is not considered eligible for the National Register. The bridge is adjacent to the Comback property, which is a township historic resource. I believe it's a Class II resource, as far as defined by the township. And so the county acknowledges that. And then the last part here, as far as the, what was called the Liechtenstein Report back in the late 90s that PennDOT had done. The bridge is, it's a common bridge. There are no innovative or distinguishing details, and the bridge or its setting is not historic or technologically noteworthy. On the next slide, as far as the county is concerned, talking about the Comprehensive Plan for Landscapes III, this area on the policy map for Landscapes III is considered a rural area, and, which basically means low-density housing, which is pretty much where we're at. In Upper Euclid, the little section in Upper Euclid just south of Marsh Creek is, there's roughly about 177 dwellings in that section. Basically, there's two roads in and out. Again, low-density, R1 low-density. And there's really only one larger plot of land that could possibly be built on in the future. That is not, that does not seem to have any type of an ag easement or protected open space easement. Again, next slide, this again is Upper Euclid. The map on the right, there are, Upper Euclid does show some proposed trails, but as far as we know, there's not really any type of action for those trails to come to light anytime soon. And then down here in East Brandywine, again, R1, low-density residential. East Brandywine's Comprehensive Plan, again, considers this area residential. And as far as other considerations, three of the four quadrants are owned, so three of the four quadrants of that bridge that touch the land are owned by, again, by the Combacks. There's even a little triangle in the upper northeastern section, I guess, which would be in Upper Euclid. And then the greens, the other parcels shaded green are owned by Chester County. The roadway is considered a local road, fairly low ADT, although with our meeting with Upper Euclid, there was, you know, a lot of discussion about heavier traffic, especially after the pandemic started, as traffic was heading to the park. But this brings in mind also, as far as, you know, this is low ADT for vehicles. And one of the other things we would like to consider is where we stand as far as pedestrian access for this particular road, especially as East Brandywine considers the bicycle, the east-west bicycle and pedestrian facility. This, you know, Reeds Road, and as the Scrubal Trail comes up, hopefully up towards Reeds Road, there is a good possibility that you could see more pedestrian traffic along Reeds Road and along North Reeds Road in the future. So it is a consideration to take in mind as far as pedestrians as well. Environmental, the stream is considered HQ high-quality, trout stocking and migratory fish, which will all be considerations during construction. And then finally, equity, health, and safety. Again, we talked about pedestrian facilities and bicycle. Public transit doesn't seem to be any type of an issue in that area. Then we get into freight and emergency vehicles and school buses, basically. So that is definitely a major concern, and we want to make sure that we are addressing those as well. And I'll hand it over to Justin.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I'm Justin Coyle with Carol Engineering. Yeah, as we've talked about, we're in the very preliminary stages, conceptual stages with the design. We've had the survey done, and we've had some environmental effort completed. We're kind of in that, we don't call it the conceptual stages of where we're at with the work. As was mentioned, the existing span, the existing bridge is a two-span. With your slide there, you can see the existing elevation of the two-span bridge with the pier in the center of the stream. Our initial preliminary design is using a single-span bridge. We feel that opens up the waterway from a hydraulic standpoint, and then allows for, to have that pier removed, which is a maintenance concern, a scour concern. So really, from an engineering standpoint, hydraulic standpoint, and impact of the stream standpoint, the single span is pretty much the direction we're trying to go in at this point. As far as the elevation, you'll see the abutments on the bottom there, the vertical members on each side of the stream. We're going to try, and we'll talk about this further, we're going to try to emulate the existing stone masonry abutments with some form liners. The guide rail will match what's out there now. It's like a brown painted or brown powder-coated guide rail. So that'll be incorporated into the project as well. If you go to the next slide. The significance of the yellow from left to right, if you will, is basically the footprint of the project. This is an interesting bridge because it does span in from one township into the other, so it's in two townships, as you know. The south abutment is in the East Brandywine Township side, north abutment in Upper Euclid. If you look just to the right on the slide, that's where the driveway is there. If you're familiar with the Sunoco line, we're not anywhere near the Sunoco line. We're trying to avoid that area. So if you will, we're trying to basically keep the footprint of the project from basically guide rail to guide rail, if you will. So it's the footprint from a roadway standpoint is trying to stay on the lighter side. And in the gray area where the stream is, is obviously the new bridge. The lower left shows you basically the preferred, initially preferred alternative at this point. It's pre-stress concrete beams, high strength, low maintenance, high durability beams, which will take the place of the steel beams, which are a maintenance concern, as we all know. We're looking at about an 86-foot single span, using brown powder-coated, open guide rail. If you're familiar with PennDOT, it's a PennDOT Type 10M rail, or it's an open rail. Allows us to provide some aesthetical treatments to it. The reinforced concrete abutments will have stone form liners, so it'll look conducive to the area. It's, I want to be, you hear the term context-sensitive. It's, we're going to try to be context-sensitive in our aesthetics and our limit of discernment on the project as well. Existing roadway width is about 19 feet, a little more. We're proposed to go about 26 and a half with the two 10-foot lanes, one 2-foot shoulder, shoulder about 4 and 1/2 feet wide. That is on the downstream side. That widened shoulder is basically anticipated to, if you want to say, used more for, if there were pedestrians on the bridge. Not necessarily a sidewalk, but a widened shoulder to accommodate pedestrian traffic. You also look at that slide in the top, like I talked about, the limits left to right. And then if you talk about upstream and downstream, we're also trying to minimize the footprint of the width of the bridge, trying to balance the future use of the bridge, future use of the roadway, providing enough width, but then not overbuilding the project, which in my opinion is not context-sensitive. So there's a balance there. Next slide. Yes, unfortunately, the bridge will be closed during construction, and there's always the detour to deal with. The detour, most likely, we have anticipated so far, will be up SR 282 Creek Road, and then over to Lindell Road, and then down, back down to North Reeds Road and over to the bridge. The detour length is about 2.2 miles, but we expect that throughout construction. And then the next slide, which is one of my favorite slides to present, is the rendering. The top is the existing bridge, showing the two-span, obviously. And then the proposed elevation in the bottom slide is basically showing you what the existing bridge is anticipated to look like. Like we said, trying to emulate the existing stone abutments with the colored form liner, and then have an open bridge rail across the span. Kind of gives you that nice visual tool across while you're crossing the bridge. And then this also shows that obviously the pier from the center of the stream is removed, and it opens up the hydraulics and improves the hydraulics and eliminates that maintenance concern and scour concern with the pier. And that's so ahead.
All right, well, thank you. That's the information that we wanted to kind of summarize for you tonight. We'd now like to open it up to questions, comments from you folks, so please.
I guess my question is, we just had a conversation two weeks ago about the amount of salt that goes into a stream after a storm is equivalent to or greater than the ocean-level salt content. Kills all the vegetation, kills all the plants and wildlife. Have you guys, is this a cutting-edge technology, that something you guys could start thinking about? Using some type of a heating cable system in the bridge itself to heat it rather than salt on top of it? Because I would have to assume the salt is what's also doing the most corrosive damage to the steel, as it would probably to the concrete as well. New concrete, I know for a fact, if you have a bridge that goes- New concrete, I know for a fact, if you have a bridge that goes right in right after being assembled, and you put new concrete bridge layers together, it causes scaling with concrete and can decompose quicker. I don't know, I'm just thinking outside the box, is there any other method to, we're using concrete instead of steel, we got 82 years out of the last bridge, I'm just thinking, has that ever been an option or something that's been considered?
Sandy, do you have any thoughts on answering, or Justin?
Well, I can start, and Justin can tell a little bit more about this. We've got a microphone there if you want to. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay. I think the challenge that we have at the county is the county only owns the bridge. So typically, we rely on the municipalities to do the snow removal across the bridge, so we are not in control of the salt application on the bridge. Is there technology? Sure there is, but it doesn't extend into the roadway. So if, you know, if there's an opportunity, you know, to partner more closely with the municipalities, I think it could be discussed.
Yeah, I just, as I said, I don't know if that's an NOLB solution to the problem, but, you know, obviously, salt deteriorates the steel, it deteriorates the concrete, and if it's something that long, long thought-out process, I mean, I know you guys said you plan on about a 50-year expectancy from a bridge, is that, is, I don't know, you guys have been in business for 50 years, have you guys had an opportunity to analyze after 20 years, after 25 years, maybe our 50 years isn't what we thought, you know?
One of the things I would add is the county has a pretty proactive maintenance program, and we flush our bridge decks each spring to make sure that we remove the salts after the winter. So we definitely, you know, take a look at that, and we definitely try to make sure. And when the bridge decks are put down, we do seal them to make sure, so there's certain measures that are already in place, that have been for a number of years, and we've been pretty successful with those, just from a maintenance perspective.
Because, I mean, bridges do freeze first, and I understand that. For plowing is one thing, but the salt, it just kills everything, unfortunately. Okay, that's my questions.
Could I add just something to that?
Please.
The design that's laid out now is the pre-stressed adjacent box beams, they're post-tensioned, well, they're pre-tensioned beams, and then they're post-tensioned, post-tensioned transverse them. So you've got initially a system that's stressed in two directions and compressed. So pre-stressed concrete, I mean, it's been around for a very long time. It is far superior from a maintenance standpoint opposed to steel beams. The only, I would say, for this infrastructure, I would say the weakest link, if you will, or the thing that's most exposed to the elements would be the deck. That's typically a five-to-six-inch-thick reinforced concrete area that could come back and be removed in the future, where they do a deck replacement. Or you could put down a layer of latex modified concrete, which gives an additional layer of impermeability, if you will. So there's things you can do. I have heard of them adding heating elements to bridges, it's just cost prohibitive, I would say. And like Sandy had said, it's, you're just looking at a small section, I'm talking about 80-some feet, as opposed to a road that's miles long, so it just would have seemed, in my opinion, I don't think it would be appropriate.
Hi, I'm Audrey Everett with McCormick Taylor, and I do work with the county's bridge crew. And the county has a, what, a preservation program, which most people think of as historic preservation, but there is actually preservation for what we call middle-aged bridges. And these are specific activities, such as sealing a concrete deck, replacing the joints at the end of their service life, putting latex-modified concrete, wearing surface on bridges as the bridges age, and that extends the life of the bridges. It extends, it extends the money that the county puts into the bridges, but it helps them to function at a high level for quite a long time, much longer than if they were allowed to deteriorate. So the county does have a program with scheduled activities for their bridges to prolong their life.
Yeah. How long do you anticipate construction will be, the timeline?
Approximately eight months.
Eight months, okay.
Depends upon the weather.
No, no, I know weather and all sorts of things, but it's, I want to know whether it's under a year or more than a year, you know, eight months.
Under a year, more like an under a year. Although now we're hearing there's delays in some things, materials and...
Well, when do you anticipate you'd start construction?
We're not far enough along to know. As Jan said in the introductory slide, we're three to four years in the process, so...
Right. If we still have delays in materials, three to four years from now, we have worse problems.
We have problems, right. One of the things that is of note for that stream is trout stock fishery. That usually gives you a, it's a waterway restriction where the contractor can't work within the waterway. So depending on when the project is actually let for construction, they may have a block of time during their construction season that they're not allowed to get into the stream.
Right, because that's above the dam, so that's high-quality water versus below the dam releases, just cold, approved trout stream, cold water fishery. So this is a higher level of quality of water up here.
Right. So we generally try to time our letting of the project to best match when those shutdowns are, so that the contractor can get in, do something, and then get out of the water while the shutdown's there, and then do something. But you can't say for sure when the design will be done, and the bids will be in, and everything will line up perfectly.
Yeah. You, I mean, you answered my question about the, about the trout and everything else right there, as far as blocking their times up and everything else.
Right. But the trout don't naturally propagate up there for various reasons, and the fishing season now is a little, two weeks earlier, so it's like April 1st through the end of May, and then after that, there's not much activity.
And the project, I mean, it is governed by DEP, we have to get permits, and all of that will be worked through, and that'll be part of that, what our restrictions will be.
Mr., Mr. Chairman, I, the county graciously provided an earlier bite at the apple for staff, but, but there was one person in preparing a team to meet with the county who I neglected to include, and is present here. The, the fire company is the designated emergency service provider for the portion of Upper Euclid Township that's immediately across. And I presume, based on the waste limit, that, that, that most of your apparatus can't cross this bridge?
No, we have to go all the way around. Actually, we have to go the detour, the route of the detour, to get to that side of Upper Euclid Township. So that bridge getting the weight restriction and, you know, made bigger would be a huge benefit to the fire club.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot, chief.
Oh, you're fine, you're fine. I was looking at the diagram, and I was hoping the red line would move straight across and encompass the fire truck, so.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I'm good.
Anybody in the audience, questions?
It's clear you're going to have to widen the bridge. Does that include a widening of the roadways on each side of the bridge?
The roadways are not in our scope, they are township roadways, they're just dealing with the bridge, so we would not be widening.
So you're mating up to the existing roadway, so you're aware of the Colmbach property.
Sandy, do you want to...
To be clear, if you remember the slide that Justin had up with the yellow, that's our limits of work. So we'll taper off of that widened bridge and taper back to the existing roadway width. So in that yellow section, which isn't very much, it's a, what, 100 feet or so off the bridge, that's, we will have a little bit of widening there, but it'll taper right back to the existing roadway.
Okay, because you're aware of the Colmbach property, that's our historic resource, number 30, and if you widen the road, I would be concerned about potential impact there.
Yeah, we've been coordinating really closely with him.
Good, that's good. I'm glad to hear that. This is the first, I heard the project was last week, and Luke made us aware.
Well, this is why we wanted to come out, so you folks would know what's going on, so.
To understand comparatively, the width of this bridge project, how does that compare to the bridge on Hadfield Road that was replaced quite a number of years ago?
All right, Sandy. Test your memory.
I assume you're talking about County Bridge 275, which is just down from County Bridge 244, which is still in design on Hadfield Road, and hasn't been replaced. I believe, I'm not as sure the exact width on that, but this is, this is, but Justin used the term context-sensitive design. When that bridge was done, and I think like 1999, that was, PennDOT didn't have context-sensitive design, and it was made like a highway bridge.
Yeah.
Right. This is not that. Now, having said that, what was our total width here, 26?
26 feet.
26, 7. I think that bridge is more in the order of 34, 30, it's wider.
Okay. Because aesthetically, you're driving along that road, you're on a nice country road, and suddenly you have this highway bridge, and then you're back on the country road again.
Right. In the early 2000s, PennDOT changed, thankfully for local bridge owners, and didn't make us design bridges like highway bridges, they said we could use context-sensitive design. And that's what Justin's team is trying to do for this bridge.
It looks like it's going to be a very nice design.
Thank you.
And I'd like to touch base with you on the Hadfield Road Bridge. It was quite a number of years we, we met regarding the bridge design, and we were going to work in an iterative process in developing the aesthetics. And you agreed to a number of, of things at historical commission meetings with regard to the aesthetics. I was curious whether that was followed through, or do you plan on visiting with us to update us on that design?
Absolutely, yeah. Jan and I have been talking about that, we are, that bridge is getting closer. We are in right-of-way negotiate, we've been talking with Mr. Black for that bridge, and we've been talking to the property owners, and I think we've now got a design that I would say this spring, we're probably ready to come back and talk to the historic commission. And we did do the aesthetic and the steel and the stone facing and some of the aesthetic features at the historic commission.
And the wing walls are pretty much as we discussed, or I guess we'll get into the details.
Yeah, I mean, yes and no. There's, we had, there's yes, and there's some things that are, had to be done for safety reasons, so it's yes.
Okay.
And a little bit of no. But we'd like to present it back. We do plan to come back.
We will be back to explain that in more detail for you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
No, thank you. Appreciate your answer.
Anybody else?
Anyone else?
Uh, just the reliability on the DEP. Will there be any pre, like, water quality monitoring, like, prior to construction, during construction, and after construction, to see, like, you know, the closest monitoring station is down on Downing Forge Road, so how do we know that there isn't any sort of impact to this waterway, besides what the calendar says and anticipated trout stocking or trout presence? What measures will be taken place to ensure that nothing is contaminating the Brandywine? And second part to the question, if we're going to shut down that road for eight months, I think anybody from the area realizes that's like kind of a problematic area, how people come off of North Reed's Road on the 282. There's also a bridge perpendicular to that road that like kicks the lanes over to the side. I drive a lot of trucks, I find it's problematic, and people can't really see pulling out, so it seems like an opportunity to upgrade that intersection without compromising the historic property or anything like that. Why shut down that access twice? You know, it might be a good time to improve that intersection as well.
And, and, real quick, Matt, who's responsibility is that?
The short section on its townships.
The intersection itself is both, correct?
Right, yeah. The state.
Do you want to take question number two first? My, my understanding is that we did, we did have discussions with PennDOT about is there an opportunity for some synergy of looking at some improvement of that small bridge coming up to the approach to the turn onto North Reed's. They have nothing planned for there, and, and 282 being state road, and then the Reed's being township road, it would really be up to township and the state to sort out that intersection, rather than our bridge project. But if, and if, either if you choose to look into that, we'd be more than happy to coordinate our project with yours. Sandy, please augment.
I think you did a good job. Yeah, we, we, to everything Jan said, and I always, for 30 years, I've gotten frustrated by the division of who owns what, because the county owns the bridge, you own the roadway, state owns 282. So we all got to, you know, get together if there's going to be some, you know, interaction there. But I think our project is still, you know, three to four years out, and we have an opportunity, if it's something where the county or the township and the state wanted to pursue something, to tie the two together. Now, I will say, we are using 282 as a detour, so it would have to be staged construction, because we do need 282 to be able to get off of Lindell and back down to Downingtown or wherever you're going. So it, but it could be done. But it, our, our limit of work is pretty much where Justin showed, just taking the bridge and then taping it, tapering it about 100 feet out to tie back into existing township roads.
Would it be part of it, do you do like the specifications for the project? Like, do you, does your company design the bridge and the job, and then it gets put out the bid?
That's Carol Engineering, but yes, they do.
Would it be up, do you have, do you have specifications as far as stream quality, as far as that could be an objective and a requirement for the contractor to do the pre, you know, pre and then post, because as far as stream conditions?
That is not typically a part of a bridge project.
Water quality monitoring would, would be beyond the scope or necessity of the bridge project. And as you commented, DEP, we do have to go through DEP permitting, which requires us to provide plans indicating how we're going to avoid allowing anything to enter into the water from our, our earth disturbance. And so what measures are going to be taken to keep erosion and sedimentation from getting into the stream? So that's the measures and the approach that gets taken for protecting the stream water quality and not impacting it, is by, is through the ENS controls, through the staging and the sequencing and the...
The hazard analysis?
Making sure that the areas are stabilized and not left open for undue amounts of time to create erosion that would enter into the stream, so.
And what I'm not seeing is an erosion sediment control plan.
That's right. You are not seeing that.
You will.
We are not there.
Yeah, there will be one.
And also, you guys seem to have a topic and everything in the area. I'm very interested in the Brandywine, and recently I've discovered there's about 26 UPIs within the Brandywine. It seems like some sort of falsification of properties where there's UPIs that are created within the Brandywine, where it's very clear that property rights are met, like, in the center of the water.
Correct.
Because, you know, like, if there's a flood, your property taxes don't go down. If there's a drought, your property taxes don't go up. So there's actually a boundary within that line. Are you guys familiar with the, this fictitious UPI that's on this stretch of river, and do you have any sort of determination of why that exists?
I am not familiar with any fictitious UPI. I don't know. Have you heard of any situation like that? My understanding, and I've spent a lot of, a lot of years working with properties as they enter into the stream, et cetera, private properties, the, the land area under the stream is owned by a property owner. Typically, it is an adjacent-to-the-stream owner that own the land under the stream. They don't own the stream, but they own the land underneath it, the state owns the stream.
That's what's very...
But they own the land underneath it, and so their UPI, their property parcel have its own UPI, and their property parcel will extend to whatever location their property parcel ends, even if that is under the stream. So it's not a matter of, I don't think it's a matter of fictitious UPI. I think it's a matter of, until you actually look at a lot of them, is you'll, you'll often see the tax maps will show the property parcel, and then they show the stream on top, and you don't see that, that final parcel boundary because it's under the stream.
I actually own property on the Brandywine.
So you understand, your property goes into the stream.
And that's why I bring it up, to hopefully avoid a litigious situation with a bunch of lawyers and everything. Because what I've discovered on my property is a fake UPI. The title is UPI 33-3-0, which also doesn't make sense, because our municipality, you know, the first two numbers represent the municipality. I live in East Brandywine Township, that doesn't even correlate with the numbers. So I feel like the first step is to find out the exact property that we're discussing and these inconsistencies that surround it. I mean, if this is the first you're hearing about it, I would implore you to look on Chesco Views, look exactly on that section of river, and see the UPI that I'm talking about, and discuss it with, I think it's Jonathan Chuck.
Yeah, I think we're quite confident that we've got our land, our land areas delineated and numerized accurately. They do go through great effort to make sure that they have accurate data on the lands that are involved.
So I'm specifically telling you exists, but you're just confident that it doesn't.
Not at our location, I'm certain it doesn't.
No, what I would say is we have two property owners, the Colmbach property and the county of Chester, and Justin and his team do go on Chesco Views, and they do the, do the tax deed research, and they do surveys to verify that. Our project, we are only looking from a construction standpoint, responsible 50 feet upstream and downstream. So we don't chase it too far down the waterway.
You're crossing the waterway, and there's a, what is going on with the waterway? So who did, like, I don't want to drag out this meeting and everything, but if I could have, what are your contacts or something?
I think your question, I think if you, if, I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I'm wondering if a conversation between you and the tax assessor's office might help clarify or at least resolve your...
Jonathan Chuck is unable to provide answers for some reason, even though he's been there for quite a number of years, so, I mean, this presentation, you asked... So I mean, this presentation, you asked the public if they have any questions or concerns. I'm conveying these questions and concerns.
All related to Jonathan.
I am positive that it exists. Are you guys aware there's a new Chesco Views that's being launched on April first? So I would have thought that some of these inconsistencies would have been addressed, but they're, they're on the new Chesco Views as well. So whether it's by accident or whether it's an intentional falsification, I don't know. Water seems to be a hot commodity and a lot of people are looking to privatize it. So, you know, and, and a lot of these things, this is how you discover things.
And, and you're absolutely right. And then because this project, we're going to require right away, right now with thirty-three foot wide roadway right away. To build this bridge, we're going to need some construction easements and right away. So Justin and his team will pull the deeds. They'll go further than Chesco Views to research this.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, Chesco.
Yeah, I think, you know, the only explanation they gave is that it's, these UPIs, it's in Jonathan, I don't want to quote anybody, but there's been opinions that they're used in relation to certain projects. So since this is such an important project and everything, and one of those UPIs exists right there. This is like the perfect opportunity for somebody to explain why they exist and how they're being used.
Yeah, I don't have the expertise to do that.
And again, even, even if it was a, a situation that did affect us, we would be going right back to Jonathan, Jonathan Chuck for resolution because that's his responsibility, not ours, to sort out a UPI number.
Yeah, but is it really smart to bank a bunch of money and everything on just one person's interpretation? Or should we really like figure out?
Well, and again, as, as Sandy was saying, we don't rely on Chesco Views. We go back to the deed and the meets and vows description of the properties that are in the deed, the surveys that our design engineer does. UPI numbers are merely a label. They are not the actual property boundaries that we use. We don't use the property boundaries from Chesco Views because that has some answers.
It's a question. Who is the surveyor that you use for all this?
Justin, do you use your own?
Carol Engineering is the designer and the surveyor.
What is it?
Carol Engineering.
Carol? Okay, thank you. Is it okay for me or my attorney to reach out to your office for some clarification on some things?
You would need to, your lawyer would need to contact the county solicitor for that information and we'd be happy to take that.
He's already in contact with her, so this might flow very well. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you guys.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions or comments? Don't hesitate to let us know contact information on the last page.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I can't even think of the right word, but if you don't mind, we're going to take our ask.
Absolutely, absolutely. I'm going to turn it over to Matt Van Lu now for the proposal for software upgrades to municipal complex HVAC system.
Thank you. Honeywell Building Solutions has provided a proposal for software upgrade for our HVAC system. Our current software was purchased in two thousand and five during the construction of the complex and is no longer supported. In addition to the Honeywell proposal is a proposal from customcomputer.com for additional support. This proposal includes building a virtual machine on our server to support the operations of the system. It also includes a Windows ten's license. And the Honeywell software proposal is thirteen thousand four twenty-nine thirty-eight. And the proposal from customcomputer.com is one thousand two hundred nine ninety for a total project cost fourteen thousand six hundred thirty-nine twenty-eight. I respectfully request the board accept the proposal for the HVAC software upgrades.
Guys, any questions?
No.
I, just a few points as it relates to procurement policy. The amount is over the telephone bid, but under the sealed bids. However, I think since this is proprietary software necessary to replace existing proprietary, proprietary software, it is exempt from our usual procurement method.
Perfect. Okay.
Me?
Yep.
Have we got the camera? Do you do the cameras?
No, he's doing this one here.
Okay, so.
Then we're going to go to Luke.
So you still want me to bring my item up now?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to bring it up after the freightliner truck.
Are you going from A, or I'm sorry, are you going to go from B to F and, and E? Are you going to do that separately?
I can, I can go in order. That's fine.
I just figured since you're, you're there anyway.
Okay. My second item is we've received two proposals for a two thousand and four thirty-nine thousand GV, GVW freightliner truck. And yes, I said two thousand and four. They are at least sixteen to eighteen months out for a chassis. The proposals are separated into two parts, the chassis and the outfitting of the truck. First proposal is from Berman Truck Group for eighty-seven thousand six hundred twenty-nine for the chassis. We've purchased the past three chassis from Berman Freightliner. And the second proposal is eighty-two thousand nine thirty-nine from Ian Cuts for the dump body, the spreader, plow and other equipment. We have a hundred thousand budget from Liquid Fuels and ninety thousand from Public Works Capital Project for two thousand and twenty, which we will reallocate for two thousand and twenty-three since the truck will not be completed until then. And again, I respectfully request permission to accept the proposal from Berman Truck Group for the two thousand and twenty-four freightliner chassis for eighty-seven thousand six twenty-one. And also the proposal from EM Cuts for eighty-two thousand nine thirty-nine for outfitting the truck.
And, and again, the procurement note here is that both of these purchases are on state contract. Through Co-Stars.
Through Co-Stars.
I make a motion that we accept both, both bids for the new heavy-duty truck.
I, I think that I'm gonna, I, I think a hundred seventy thousand dollars for a truck is just crazy. I mean, I just, I can't see it. I'm sorry, for a dump truck. I've said this since day one. I just, a hundred seventy thousand dollars for a dump truck is just, it's a house. But that's just my opinion. I mean, is there any way that we can go like a leftover model or like something?
Are there any leftover models even right now? Like I know right now.
I don't know.
No.
No?
The, I talked to the freightliner dealer and he usually has contractors who will buy ten, fifteen chassis from them a year. And he's told those contractors that he can only sell them probably about half of what he normally can. That's why there's such a long lead time is of eighteen months. Our two thousand and five freightliner is actually due to be replaced the, the year following that, because we use.
That will come back to the, the sale of that truck.
Pardon?
That, the sale of that truck comes back to the.
We will probably hold on to that truck, hold on to the two thousand and five freightliner.
And you, you think we have a need for both of them?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Right, I, I agree with Jason's point and I, I appreciate it, but I think that, Jason, what we're really doing is replacing a truck, not adding a new truck.
Yeah, no, I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm just.
I hate, I hate, I used to buy contractor trucks and sometimes unfortunately, the contractors trade them in every, depending on the type of chassis it is, every three, five or seven years and they're pretty much beat to death.
Well, and the problem is.
Whereas we don't beat ours to death.
Well, and, and we also don't have the luxury having to service township roads to buy used equipment and have it break down, not knowing the variables.
Right, and that's why I think we're, Matt wants to keep the two thousand and five as a backup if something happens. Cause it's a.
Has anybody explored leasing the vehicle?
No, leasing is always more expensive. It is never less expensive.
New vehicles under warranty and like you just said, most contractors trade them in. That's why they trade them in. Do you have many trucks? Have you ever had a truck?
Who, me?
Yeah, you.
Yes.
A commercial vehicle?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. I'm also a licensed CPA and used to do lease buy calculations for clients all the time. So leasing is always more expensive.
You also want to make the motion for it's Honeywell, because we didn't talk about that.
Okay, I thought we skipped that. I'll make a motion that we accept the proposal from Honeywell to upgrade our HVAC. I guess what's, is the operating system, the computer system?
Correct.
Yeah, it's software.
Those are second?
L second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then the same for the truck.
Did any other, then that took care of B and C?
And just E now.
Kyle, you didn't, Kyle?
No, we're going to go back to E. We didn't do, we didn't do the, I'm sorry, we didn't, we did B, we're going back to E.
Okay, because there wasn't a second on Carl's motion for, for the truck.
Yeah, so I'll make a second on the motion for the purchase of the vehicle.
You're second again, right?
Yep.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
All right, so we're going to go now to.
No, I have one other item.
Yeah, yeah.
Under new business or?
I, I'm sorry, I, I have a couple of proposals in there too before we.
No problem.
We skip C and D?
Yeah, go ahead, Carl.
Under new business, I'm, I'm asking the, get, wanted to ask the supervisors if they are in agreement with my thoughts that under the ordinance task force that is active and meeting now, that we ask the ordinance task, task force to review impervious lot coverage percentages in R one and R two. I've had a couple of people contact me since I've been supervisor. So I looked into it quite extensively, went back to the last six zoning hearing appeals. They're all R one or R twos. And when you look at the other lot coverages, R, R one especially is very limited. And I would like the task force to review those lot coverages. I'm suggesting at least fifteen percent in R one and two. And it, I mean, you're only talking a few hundred feet, but that'll eliminate, that would eliminate five of those six zoning hearings.
I don't have a problem with bringing that up to the task force for a review.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Carl, Carl?
Yeah.
This wasn't, this, because it wasn't on the agenda with the new act sixty-five for matters to have to be posted on the agenda twenty-four hours? Just if you could put it on the agenda for formal action at the March third meeting?
Yeah, we can absolutely do that. That's fine.
Well, I didn't think it was really needed formal action.
You can bring it up to yourself.
Yeah, it's just a, it's just a, I just, well, I didn't want to bring it up without discussing it with the supervisors, other supervisors. I don't, I don't know why it needs to be a, an action item. It's just a recommendation.
That's fine. I thought you were asking the board to take a motion on it.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't under.
No, we're good, we're good.
I can't follow.
Okay, go ahead, Luke.
All right. So just for clarity, we're on new business item C. Before you is a second Honeywell proposal, this time for a healthy building assessment in the amount of six thousand dollars. And I'm respectfully asking the board's permission to engage Honeywell to perform the service using the American Rescue Plan funds, which will pay for HVAC improvements in public buildings. This assessment will, is necessary to make recommendations for improvements to, to our air quality. For the, well, for, for everyone's benefit. We, we are an essential service provider, the police department and, and Public Works use the facility. And I don't know what the recommendations will be, but I, I would like to explore improvements to our, our HVAC using federal dollars. Not a very good presentation, my apologies. The, the spirit of the thing is, is that we have COVID money available and I would like to use a portion of those funds to explore improvements to our HVAC system. And therefore there's a proposal from Honeywell for just that.
Okay, thank you.
What will be the deliverables?
A recommendation for improvements to the system.
Using Honeywell products.
No doubt.
Is there any way we can just talk about, put on the next agenda or sometime soon about the building and the upcoming repairs and everything that needs to be done? That it's been, I know for as long as you've been here and I've been here, it's been the same issue and it's been the same. You know, I'm not saying anything bad about Honeywell, but I'm saying that's been, they haven't improved it. And it still hasn't been repaired in four years. I think that. I'm, I'm tired of signing eight, eight hundred thousand dollar checks and four thousand dollar checks to Honeywell when everyone's either, the, the air quality is not there as it is for what the equipment is and, you know?
It's interesting. We had that same problem with the school district and of course, our, our air handlers are a quarter of a million dollars each. And they're run and we had, you almost can't change a supplier. Cause, right, because, because they all use proprietary software where, and it's a nightmare. So unless you change the whole system, you can't move away from Honeywell. That, and I, I find that horrible as a custodian of the public money that you're stuck with a supplier. Unless you replace everything.
I mean, the biggest.
But your point though is.
The biggest controls are Schneider or Siemens.
Maybe we look at it and do replace everything if it's that old.
Yeah. I just think we need to take a look at, at the future needs of the building and instead of just looking at things yearly.
So, so I guess the more.
Just for down the road.
Yeah, yeah. I was going to say maybe the more deliverable would be to have a totally different vendor come in as well as Honey, as well as Honeywell. And the totally different vendor could look at everything and tell us what they would do differently.
Cause they'll do it for free.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
In hopes of, in hopes of a RP, you know?
So you guys, I'm okay with that.
I have a question. Has there been any air quality tests or anything or just spending money just?
Yeah, it's just not, they're not, it's, in my opinion, there has been testing and it hasn't been complete. And there's been mold and there's been this, there's, there's been a lot of stuff. There's been issues. And it's with, with insulation and with, with air tightness with, you know, it, it, it's ongoing.
So the quality has developed, who's, who's tasked with monitoring those things? Like it takes at least, you know, there, there's a combination of events to make it end up at that point where, you know, if there's water infiltration or?
There's controls that show that, but it's not, the controls aren't, in my opinion, calibrated or accurate. So it, you know, they're there, but they're not really there.
So like does the township engineer or whoever we hire, do they have some sort of division to come, especially in the era of COVID and everything? I gotta imagine this is like a hot item now for air quality.
Yeah, the cleaners and UVs and everything else, but it's just something that, you know, right now it's a building where the public works does all the maintenance as far as the Honeywell systems and online controls and, you know, sensors and everything. But they're, they're, they can only do as much as the system can allow them to do. And, and I just feel like we need to look at other options as far as not just Honeywell.
I, I, in, in no way intend this to sound like I'm being a bad steward of the, of the taxpayers' money.
No, you're not.
But, but the, the, these proposals in, in your packet this evening are staff's acknowledgement of the shortcomings of the system and making recommendations for investments to improve the system. And what's more, they're being paid for.
With grant money.
With grant money.
That's fine, but I just think that once we get the results, I think we need to get a second look of eyes on there and just go from there. That's all.
Okay, well.
Okay, and then Luke, I'm going to turn.
So as it relates to the, the agenda item, new business C, is there a, a motion to authorize me to execute this or should I get proposals from another agency? Or another, another air, another, another vendor for HVAC services?
I think we'll do them both at the same time and, and do the, do, I mean, that would be my take to get, again, it's federal COVID relief money. If, if it's, you know, one, one outweighs the other in terms of warranty and, and longevity, then, then maybe it's something the board thinks about changing. So I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend going head over heels with Honeywell if that may change because of cost efficiencies in the future.
Let me, let me try to clarify my thoughts in that I would go ahead with the Honeywell. But of course the deliverables are pretty general, but specific. But before you, we've, before we go to solve any of the problems they point out, we need to look at what other vendors might have. And the other Honeywell contract, are we premature in, in doing that before we do the building quality study?
What, what's, what's the timeframe of that upgrade?
Because once you upgrade, you're stuck with Honeywell.
Well, that's just, yeah, it's software, but still, I mean, yeah.
The system's running with what we have right now. It's just, it's no longer supported. And, you know, if it crashes, then I, I guess the system goes down. I, I guess the system goes down, I would imagine.
So I would, I mean, I would say time is of the essence for, for both of these, um, thought processes and, and may get, maybe a priority to, to reach out to the two. I, I don't know, um, who the secondary besides Honeywell would be, but-
We have Johnson Controls.
Yeah.
CM3, right, uh, you have, uh-
Okay, the, the, this is, uh, I'm sorry, it's still not clear. I understand, Carl, I appreciate you clarifying your position as it relates to the proposal for the healthy building assessment.
Correct.
That, that your position, we should go forward, but prior to making any of the improvements that may recommend, we should approach other vendors.
Right.
Does, does the, the board's earlier action authorizing staff to do the software upgrade still stand?
No, that's what we're saying, we've all- Software if we decide that we're gonna flip the system to a totally different vendor in the next six months per se, I'm just giving you an example. The money's not the object because it's the federal government money. I- in other words, we don't have to get, um, we don't have to get a loan for that, for that particular money. Um, we have that, um, to be used for that, so I don't think that's the issue, I think it's more being good stewards of that money.
My, my concern is that if it's a 2005 unit, it's the air handling and all the stuff you're talking about, it's exceeded its useful life already. It, you're, you're on the verge, that's 15, 16, 17 years. And nowadays you get 14 at most, they even tell you 12, I just pu- put in 12 units at an office building. So if you buy the software to run the system and decide that you need to replace the system, then the new software you bought, you didn't really get enough use out of it.
Ri- right.
It's, it's, it's a real conundrum, so I would do the air study first before I did any software upgrade to, to see how bad it is.
Okay, I, 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 I don't know the answer to this, but as it relates to my understanding of the way the HVAC system works, and we're fortunate that we have an expert on the board, so please do chime in, that in addition to the, the server side software, the control software, the individual decentralized devices within the network have, have essentially little computers in them. And, and so, so y- y- you could not swap out the, 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 the software that operates on the server without also operating out all the individual nodes that react to commands from that server?
Most, most of the time you can reuse the re, it's just relays.
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
They're just relays, most of it, all the controls are relays, they're usable with any, any, any front-end system, so you just need to make sure, there's only, there's only two or three different systems available, platforms, and everyone just customizes, Honeywell customizes theirs to theirs. You know, their needs versus, uh, CM3 versus, uh, C2, I mean, there's, there's, there's probably about, there's a bunch of companies out there, they don't all have their own platform, front-end for controls, they just offer the service. And usually if you're gonna make a change of, from a provider, they do it for free at their cost to make sure that they can monitor your, your equipment. It's already, it's usually included in their upfront costs, so.
And can't you, I mean, like, um-
You can change your-
Like, like CM3 or whatever it's called and Johnson Controls, they, they sell you the software to run Carrier or York or whatever you get.
They're just telling the system what to do, that's all.
Right, right, they just tell the system what to do, and it sounds like we might need a new system. Once, once the, uh, uh, air quality, uh, stuff is done, so does that make, make the $13,000 on Honey, Honeywell now a bad, a bad expenditure?
I think we should wait on that, just get this, see what's going on first.
I mean, I don't, I don't know enough about it.
But, but I, I preface, this is important to get moving on this because we also don't wanna have a situation where we're down and out.
Right.
We're very fortunate, we're coming up to the spring and that's a great time, but, um, nonetheless, I think that this needs to be, um, a can that doesn't get kicked. Let's just ma- make a priority maybe.
I mean, here's, they have the proposal, so they should be able to start it pretty soon, so.
Uh, okay, so i- it, it sounds like the appropriate motion is to, um, uh, reverse the board's action on, on item-
E.
Uh, yeah, which would be 7B, and to, to provide staff with direction to execute the proposal and 7C.
Correct.
Yes.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, moving on to D then, permission to purchase Protection Bureau cameras and DVR to upgrade the township building.
Yeah, at, at the request of the board, uh, staff has obtained some, um, a, a quote from our, our, um, video alarm and fire alarm vendor, which is the Protection Bureau, for upgrades to existing cameras from analog to digital, for additional new cameras, and for additional memory within the digital video recording device. This proposal assumes that the wiring for this project is run by Public Works. Missing from this proposal is a reference to the Co-Stars contract number 040001, which is the Protection Bureau's, uh, uh, Co-Stars contract number. Before we could execute, uh, a- any proposal in the amount of 26,000, which is over the mandatory bid threshold, we would need to note that their proposal references that this is a Co-Stars price. So, um, that, that's a, just an omission I caught just immediately before the meeting, they are Co-Stars vendor.
And is this another one of those items, I know that I haven't had a chance to go through the entirety of the program, but is this another one of those options that we could use some of the COVID relief money?
No, well, sort of. The, the, there is a, um, the, 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 the final plan, the final rule for the use of COVID money envisions, uh, a significant amount that's made available as revenue replacement. In other words, it just, m- m- funds that have no earmark whatsoever. And for a lot of smaller municipalities like ours, the, the, we'll call it the, the, the standard, the standard deduction that represents, um, uh, the, the unencumbered federal funds is larger than the total award. So, in, in a roundabout way, you could use the COVID money, you could say that we're using it as revenue replacement, but not as one of the expenses that's eligible, whereas the HVAC stuff is, is included as something you can use the COVID money on for directly. You could say that this project could be paid for with the COVID money, but only in the context that it's revenue replacement.
Understood.
I have a question in re- in reviewing this, um, when it says one camera license, is that including the camera or just the license, the software?
Uh, could you, uh, maybe indicate-
Project budget.
Under project budget, under which blue header are you saying this?
I mean, there's eight camera licenses, are we also getting eight cameras? I know some of our cameras don't work.
Uh, some of our cameras, uh, y- th- there are, there are new cam, some-
Not just the license, it's a camera or just the license?
I believe you're paying for the license and the cam, one camera.
No, I can't see it.
So, so, okay, so Exact Vision is the viewer that allows for remote access on the, of, of the camera feed throughout the building. And so you would need to expand the license for that client in order to have remote viewers view it at, at, for, for example, at the chief's desk.
My real question is, do we have to buy cameras on top of this?
Yes, we are buying cameras. Some cameras are entirely new installations, some cameras are replacements of analog.
So that's not in here? The newer replacements.
Well-
Well, I can't see that in here.
Yeah, I would just confirm that the price, it does have one, but I'm sure that it won't.
Probably one a lot.
Right.
The, yeah.
This is something we could hold-
Yeah, here it is, right here. That's the cam, the dome.
One camera?
One cam, well, just for that poly entrance, each section's gonna have Officer 1-
Yeah, they break it down, see?
Here it is, right here. So Officer 108, it's a camera license and that is the cam.
Okay, that didn't say camera, it said-
It's called a dome.
Okay, right, I know what a dome is, yeah. Right, okay. So this does include cameras, both replacements and the new ones, the, the, the new ones that were identified where we're short. And the, and the, um, Protection Bureau did the identification, we didn't do it ourselves, right?
We did it in conjunction.
Right, we had an expert help us.
Yes.
Okay, because I found out putting a camera as much as a foot in the wrong place makes it useless. Okay, that's my questions.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to, uh, give permission to purchase, to Protection Bureau to upgrade our, um, building with the camera DVR system.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, we've gone through-
We're learning a lesson here, we should do them in order next time.
Alright, no subdivision and loan application ordinance in resolution for considering public comment on non-agenda items. And then we have Matt Kanapeski for Police Accountability and Performance.
Uh, can I backtrack one second, cause I do have a public comment on agenda items? Uh, I didn't realize that Kristen Camp is attending, I got, are you there Kristen?
What's your, what's your question for the board? It's the Board of Supervisors meeting, we're, we're running the show, not Kristen, what do you need?
Oh, well, I just brought up before the importance to figure out what 33-3-0 was. And Kristen Camp is on the Upper Euclid Township Minutes discussing a satellite portion of that property to the tune of $10,000 per day for a cathodic easement. Uh, she signed off on it and everything, and I was just hoping she could give some insight on how these-
I would say if it's Upper Euclid, I would say bring it up at the Upper Euclid meeting, because this is the point.
Well, the 33-3-0 is connected to my property and it seems to be like title identity theft of some sort, because as, uh, most people at the township know, I was paying taxes for an acre of land that never existed for 15 years. And it wasn't until I got private counsel to, that even got acknowledged. So now, you know, we had another solicitor and now this solicitor's back and this, this particular person is in several, i- is in another township discussing this piece of property, so she seems to be, you know, very knowledgeable on the topic. And she's also, you know, like, she's here to assist in, like, I'm part of the public, I'm East Brandywine Township, my money pays for all of this.
Well, let me rephrase, first of all, we're going back to, I'm allowing you to go back to a non-agenda, to an agenda.
I appreciate that, thank you.
And I have no problem doing that, but what I'm saying is, Kristen, what I wanted to say is Kristen Camp right now is not filtering the, she's standing in for Tom Oste tonight, so if you have a question for Tom Oste as the solicitor of the township, happy to answer that question. If you have a question for Kristen filling in for Tom, I would say bring it to the board, we can certainly ask the, ask the question and get it answered for you.
So wait, you just said that if it was Tom Oste, I could ask Tom Oste?
If you had a question pertaining to East Brandywine Township, and I believe that this is nothing, I think this is a county issue, is it not?
No, it's East Brandywine Township. I mean, you guys just bought the property right next to it, you surveyed it, you, you purchased it for yourself, the, the section of river, you know, directly next to me.
So I would ask, I would ask-
Like, it's absolutely, and, and you guys all and Ken Heters, uh, appointed Jason Winters to be the point of this over a year ago. And so, uh, here I am, like, what's going on?
I would ask the township manager if he has any insight onto the, onto the issue.
I don't even know if Pinoni ever did the, the survey of the, of the bottle plant and that little strip that was purchased with the 12.1 acres on the other side of the bridge, the two parcels.
Yeah, there's two parcels, uh, some things broken up.
Along the creek.
Oh, but-
The correct side of the-
Bottom line is, my property goes to the center of the creek, and for some reason, there's this fake UPI titled UPI 33-3-0. When I discovered it, was literally right before COVID kicked off. I was in the hallway and then for that evening meeting, that's when all the mandates came in that we couldn't come into the public buildings and everything. So I memorialized that moment on Facebook Live and, you know, discussed that and all that, so it, it was, uh, you know, documented onsite and all that. I tried to, uh, reach out to the police department to make a police incident report, because I have no idea why it exists or how it exists or what it's for. All I know is it's my property and this seems to be an ongoing thing, and it's pretty simple. Uh, 33-3-0, the first two letters represent the municipality, that's not ours.
Now, but the county handles UPIs, we don't have anything to do with it.
Understand that, and then, but the other thing is there was a satellite location affiliated with that, and that's where Kristen Camp comes into play. And, I mean, hey, if she doesn't wanna talk or whatever, that's no big deal.
What she wants to talk about is what the township-
Was that over there, that like, little area down near Shmona Creek for like the sewer or, or?
It was directly across from Shmona Creek School.
Yeah.
It was a lot that measured 453 feet by 70 feet, but measures no acreage. And this whole anomaly is going on, wow, Kristen Camp, the person who's filling in tonight, just so happened to be, she's on the Upper Euclid Township meeting, minutes approving a cathodic easement for $10,000 per day over the satellite location. And that's also not a correct location, because that township line also, uh, negates the use of 33, where it should be 32 or whatever. Now, she's a professional land and zoning use attorney and it's kinda suspicious that she just won't even, just, why not just answer the question?
Well, because the board hasn't authorized her to do it.
Right.
So, so I-
Okay, so that, uh, I appreciate the time, so that's just the conclusion, you're just, nobody's here to answer it.
You're not letting me finish my sentence, my sentence is, I would appreciate if you would put it in writing what you want us to find out, so that we're not, um, we're not-
Well, see, Kyle, I already did, and the previous, do, do you recall that, Ken? On the, the group email appointing, uh, Jason Winters for this particular thing?
There was discussion, Jason was taking point to the-
It stopped in the winter when nobody could-
And how long ago was that?
Uh, do the survey.
So, so what do you, are you asking for us to do the survey on, is that what you're asking?
I'll have my attorney convey anything that's, you know, relatable to the issue or whatever.
I think that would be the best answer to it, to have the attorney relate it to ours and we can run it through the solicitors.
Okay, I really appreciate that.
Okay, so, so then you had your, your, uh, public comment for your non-agenda items, which was, uh, police accountability and performance, and I would remind you again, it's the board supervisors, please direct it to us and we'll, we'll convey.
Absolutely, this is a perfect segue and display of kinda what goes on here. Just like, uh, we have definitive proof that, y- you know, you, you repeatedly asked me to put down in writing and everything what I've already done. And then every time I approach the board and everything, it's like you've never heard it before, even though you, you know full well what it is.
I know the, excuse me, I know the j- the gist of it, but I'll tell you, there's a point person at every year, and it's the chairman of the board, and the chairman of the board may or may not handle that particular direction, so-
Well, it was a little confusing, cause you quit that position last time, right, out of, you had-
Matt, what is your, go back to what your story is, not about my professional, whether I quit something or didn't quit something, let's get back to your opinion on what you wanna talk about, and it has nothing to do with accountability, cause I tell you, the buck rests with the board right here.
Accountab- that's the name of the agenda item, what do you mean it has nothing to do with accountability? It says police and accountability performance.
Okay, so go ahead and talk-
So that was a, that was a display of lack of accountability on your part.
Okay.
And see how easily that develops? Now we're gonna move to the police department. So it's police, accountability and performance. A lot of this theme of what I hear regularly at these meetings is, it seems like money's a little tight. Doesn't make a lot of sense since these neighborhoods are going up everywhere, the population's screaming up in this particular township, and for all intensive purposes, this township is a gas station and a strip mall. If anybody who didn't live here asked, "Do you know of East Brandywine Township?", they wouldn't have a clue. It's not, it's not a thing, so I'm a little curious as to why Mark Cozy seems to have just like an endless, uh, uh, access to our taxpayer money. I mean, um, uh, it seemed like we're completely overstaffed, like, what is it, 15 or 16 full-time officers? I called the office last Monday, there wasn't a available officer to speak to me. I called the office on Tuesday, there wasn't an officer available to speak to me. After pressing the issue, finally Cozy gets on the phone. He has a horrible attitude, it's not, you know, if you're given a telephone in an office and a call comes through to you, that's because you're supposed to, you know, field the questions and communicate with the community that you're paid to represent and protect. Now Chief Cozy, I don't know how long he's been here, but he seems extremely outdated. And I don't know if that outdatedness is intentional, or it's just, he's unable to do the job.
Well, you're entitled to your-
And so this is a national-
Alright, timeout, timeout, you can't make- All right, timeout, timeout. You can't make personnel comments in, in, in a public meeting like that. You can't attack somebody personally by making comments that he's.
Are you, are you an attorney or can Kristin Camp?
I'm a board member.
So, so hold on, real quick.
So is it okay for you to, is it okay for you to, uh, change your inflection and yell at people whenever you feel like it, Mr. Croft?
So, so here's, here's the moral of the story. You got your points across. I gave you ample time, but as I told you before.
What do you mean you gave me ample time?
I gave you ample time. You're directing your questions to the board. You're not directing it to the chief. You're not directing it to the.
I'm not directing it to chief.
I understand it, but when you're making derogatory comments and, and slandering comments about somebody, I'm telling you, stop and you direct it to the board. The board only, and we're happy to listen to your concerns and we're happy to help you out with any.
I didn't realize I was slandering somebody. I'm sorry, pointing out a perception is perceived. My perceived deficiency in the police department is not intended to slander an individual.
You know, in twenty twenty-one, East Brandywine Township was voted the top ten safest townships to live in the state of Pennsylvania?
I can tell you I've been shot at in this township. I can tell you there was a shooting down the street.
Well, I can tell you what, what the stats say. So we're, we're an accredited police department.
From what stats? Who gave you those stats? I'm sorry, is this your agenda topic or is it mine? Did you wanna hear what I have to say?
No, it's our agenda, actually.
So finish it up.
Okay, well, uh, I seen, there seems to be a national demand for police accountability. Uh, I mean, it's all over the place and everything and I'm just, I'm a little concerned that East Brandywine isn't up to the times. There's a lot of cyber crimes, seems to be a main thing. And congratulations on the vote. I don't see any substance. I don't read anything in the paper where anything was accomplished or diverted or prevented. All I see is, you know, Coffee with Joe or whatever it is and they parade him in here and all that. Now, I'm a huge supporter of law enforcement and I've met many of them firsthand and I think many of them are excellent, excellent people. I think the leadership is very poor and outdated. And I think that, you know, that's all very, it's verifiable. So I don't see why, when money's an issue and everything, when we're basically padding a man's salary to set him out at pasture for a six-figure retirement, I don't see how that's fair to the taxpayer. And feelings has nothing to do with production. We would all like everybody to go off and live a comfortable existence and everything, but, you know, life's a life. So, um, I think it, you know, in, in mentioning, you know, it's Black History Month. Do we have a black police officer? You know, with this increase of population, do we have an Indian officer? Or maybe there's certain cultural discrepancies that are just not apparent to certain Caucasians and all that stuff. So I'm wondering like, as we add all these people and everything, why are they the same people? There, there's nobody on the road crew. There's nobody in the office. There's nobody in the police department. This is like, this is very, like, this is an archaic mindset that you come in here and you try to communicate your concerns with the board. We got a solicitor that just doesn't talk and everybody else is giving their perception of the law. Where you don't have a law.
I do appreciate it. And as I said to you before, keep in mind, East Brandywine Township, and I'm not looking for any further comments. I just wanted to point out, East Brandywine Township, as I said before, was voted top ten safest townships in Pennsylvania, um, um, last year, twenty twenty-one, as well as on the police liaison. So any question?
Is that twenty twenty-one? That was?
Twenty twenty-one, that was last year. And any other questions, any other questions you have? I am the police liaison for the Board of Supervisors. Have, feel free, email me and I will answer you the same as I do any other resident.
Okay, so can I have one more question?
No, we're done tonight though, but thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right, so thank you. Um, anybody else for public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, uh, we're gonna make a notice that we did have an executive session on February seventh, twenty twenty-two to discuss pending litigation. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn? So move. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.